All right, we're going to open the City Council's special meeting July 21st. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Graham Mahia.
Here. Moving on to special orders of the day. Three A, review of the draft individual use agreements for McCullough Field and the master joint use agreement for the Los Alamitos Unified School District and discuss to future individual joint use agreements. I gotta get my glasses. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We are here today with a study session to review the draft joint use agreement that the staffs from both the city and the school district have been working on over a number of months. And this is our initial presentation to the full City Council. We have been discussing this through the working group of the city and the school district. The last three meetings, I think, that we've had with the joint working group, we have discussed the individual joint use agreements. And each boards are going to be reviewing this with their staff. And the school district has had a couple of study sessions to talk about it between their staff and their board at this point. And this is our first opportunity for staff to present the draft individual joint use agreement and concepts and the master joint use agreement, the draft of that one, to the council. And we will be going back to the next meeting of the working group of the, between the school district and the city representatives on August 5th, Tuesday, August 5th, as the next step after today's presentation. So with that introduction, I will now have Cory Lakin, our Director of Recreation and Community Services, do the staff report.
Thank you, Brett and Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much. Like the city manager said today, it's going to be an overview of both the draft individual joint use agreement specifically from McCullough Field, the revised draft master joint use agreement and the changes there within, and a basic overview of the other pending discussions on the additional joint use agreements for Oak Middle School. We're going to review, discuss, and ask the council to provide any questions, alterations, discussion items on both the IJUA for McCullough and the master joint use, the draft master, and then any discussion going forward for the other five prospective IJUAs. We're not going to be voting or finalizing any of the agreements. We're just looking for some general direction and the concepts going forward. And at that point, once all of the, we can have multiple study sessions, and once all of the IJUAs and master are in what we feel is a presentable form, we'll all be brought back to both the board and the council for final approval and adoption. Just a little bit of background, for 40 years now, the city and the school district have had some sort of joint use agreements. 1974 was for the Oak Middle School Gymnasium. 1978 was for the Oak Middle School Fields. And 2001 was for the McCullough Middle School Fields. In September 2010, an updated master joint use agreement was agreed upon by all of the, both entities. That's kind of a overarching agreement having to do mainly with the legalities and liabilities and the tenure. So the, of the agreements, the master will hold the dates of the individual joint use agreements, and again, all the legal and liability language and indemnification language and that sort of thing. Like the city manager said, we've had several city district working group meetings discussing this. Staff have spent many hours drafting these and redrafting this, so, but by no means is this the final. So we hope that you provide us some good input. I'm gonna overview, I'm gonna start with the draft individual joint use agreement for McCullough Field. Under the old IJUA for McCullough, the city maintained two large fields and the district maintained the track and the track field. The city and district split the cost for water on the two large fields, but the district was solely responsible for the water costs on the track field. The draft, the new agreement, the draft agreement includes the city maintaining all of the McCullough Fields, including the track and the track field. This is basically, would mean that the city would be responsible for paying 50% of the water costs at the track field, which the city is not currently paying, and the additional costs will include the additional staff time and maintenance and materials for the additional field, as well as the track itself. With this new model, the city will maintain McCullough Middle School Fields and the district will maintain Oak Middle School Fields. So basically, the city would be maintaining about seven acres over at McCullough, and the district will be maintaining about 10 acres over at Oak Field. The financial implications, the additional costs is estimated anywhere between 18,000 and 21,000 a year. Currently, in the fiscal year 14, 15 budget, all of that is budget except for $3,000. And basically, the $3,000 cost is the city's portion of installing and paying for fertigation on the track field that's currently installed out there, but it's, the district is paying for that currently. So that's the middle school field. And again, in, the idea behind it is the equality, that the city would maintain their, the one field at McCullough and all components there, and the district would maintain Oak Field and all the components there. The draft or master joint use agreement houses the legal language and the broad terms and timeline for the individual joint use agreements. It's a five-year agreement with the possibility of a five-year extension. Again, that was approved by both entities in September of 2010, and we're recommending that once all the IJUAs are ready for approval, that we approve a new master joint use agreement so the timelines match up for all of them. Additionally, we added a new section to the master joint use agreement dealing with the Field Capital Improvement Program, or the CIP funds for the field. This is the capital direct fees previously referred to as the per-head fee, and all the language that goes into the collection, retention, and use of the CIP or the per-head fee funds. The money would be retained by both the city and the school district independently. However, the money will be pooled together for the, for its use in order to spend the funding on large capital-type expenses like redoing an entire field, including the turf and irrigation, or an entire irrigation system, large expense items that, that funds are not currently available for. It's being recommended that a minimum balance of $500,000 be retained in those collective budgets before any money is allocated due to the expensive nature of these projects. We know that the so-called scrubbing and grubbing of Oak Field out here is over $1 million. So that, obviously, that's why, you know, we're recommending a $500,000 minimum just because the sheer expense of these capital projects. The project locations will begin in order with the joint use fields, so McCullough and/or Oak Middle School, followed by a City of Los Alamitos Field, which would be Laurel, Little Cottonwood, Orville Lewis, followed by a district field, which would be an elementary, middle, or high school field that the district retains the rights to. Not all the funds must be spent on one project, and there should be a consensus reached between the city council and the school board on which project to fund for the joint use fields when the city or the district have final say on the projects that impact the fields that they own. Again, I'm not gonna get into all the language. You have copies of both the IJUA for McCullough and the master joint use with the specific language on how the money is retained and spent. Future individual joint use agreements, the general direction for the future IJUAs follow a very similar strategy to the McCullough. Again, the city will maintain all athletic fields at McCullough Middle School, approximately seven acres, and split the cost of water and large nonroutine maintenance, which is defined in the, in the master with the district. And then alternatively, the district will maintain all the athletic fields at Oak Middle School, which is approximately 10 acres, and split the cost of water and large nonroutine maintenance with the city. Currently, the district maintains all of Oak and pays 100% of the irrigation costs at Oak. The financial impact, and I apologize for the lengthy description in the staff report, it's very difficult to predict at this time. As you know, they're doing major construction out there, scrubbing and grubbing, redoing the irrigation, putting in a brand-new five-blended grass that we currently don't have in the city. So with a new irrigation system, with new turf, with leveling off the soil, it's very difficult to know what and predict what the actual irrigation water costs are going to be. You know, we can base it off of the current costs at a seven-acre field over at McCullough and, and make an estimate of, you know, 12,000 to $14,000 based on acreage. We can base it on past usage at Oak with a less-than-stellar irrigation system and, you know, an old field that, that needed to be rehabbed, and then the price could go up to, you know, in the low $20,000 range. So the city's portion, again, could range anywhere between 10,000 to 12,000, all the way up to 20,000 to $25,000. It's difficult to predict, obviously. The, we'll work with the district to work with their consultants and see if they can put together a price estimate on what they think it would be. But again, it would be an estimate until a full year's worth of watering, once the field is, is grown and, and matured. Also, there's fertigation going in over there, so the idea behind the fertigation is that over time, the water usage is, is less and less as the composition of the soil and the grass matures and gets used to it. The individual joint use agreements for Oak Gym, the Oak outdoor basketball courts, the Oak community restrooms, and the bike-walking path that leads from Oak Street to Coyote Creek Park has not yet been discussed. So therefore predicting the expenditures is difficult. Obviously, the city contributed to the rehab of both the gym and the building of the community restrooms that the district kindly built and allows the city to utilize and the user groups to utilize. Since both the gym and the restrooms are brand-new facilities, ongoing maintenance will likely be very routine, such as sweeping, mopping, and restocking, cleaning, that currently both Public Works and the Recreation Department basically use current staff and current equipment to, to handle those things. But additional costs like light bulbs and other fixtures, again, are difficult to predict from year to year without a couple of years underneath our belt. Again, we'll speak with the district to see if they can get us kind of a hard cost from their consultants, but with it being brand-new and, and we hope that everything lasts a long time. The gymnasium floor should be refinished annually. The estimated cost is around $4,500. If that cost is split between the entities, the city would be responsible for about half of that, about $2,200. The revenue, which is currently retained for the Oak Gym, is approximately $20,000. If we were to divide that and split that with the district, approximately $10,000 annually would be lost from the city's revenue. And the district has indicated that the outdoor basketball courts are likely going to be slurry sealed once the modernization has taken place. Therefore, again, minimal costs are expected for the outdoor courts for a while. And the bike and walking path for, that leads to Coyote Creek is currently maintained by the city and by Public Works, so costs aren't expected to, to change anywhere there. The overall fiscal impact for the draft IJUA for McCullough is estimated at between 18,000 and $21,000. Most of that, again, is currently budgeted in the 14, 15 budget, except for about $3,000 for the fertigation. There's no financial impact for the master joint use agreement as the facility user policy and procedures, rules, and guidelines was adopted and implemented starting January 1st of this year. The fiscal impact, again, for the individual joint use agreements, the other five, is extremely difficult to predict at this time. Obviously, once we get some direction on, from the council and from the, the board as to where they want to take the other joint use agreements, we can solidify that number. Again, a round figure would be zero if things remain the same, all the way up to 30,000 to $35,000 if we're splitting revenues, if we're, you know, splitting expenditures, if water costs are very high, that sort of thing. But again, it's, it's, it's difficult to predict. The only other caveat that I might add is that the estimated water costs, again, for Oak Field, the, the large range of 10,000 to $25,000 is also not included in the budget. However, the rest of the expenditures, which we're estimating cumulatively is, is probably about $45,000 or so, is included in the current year's budget. So we, we did include some, but not all, because it's, again, difficult to predict, and knowing likely that this wasn't going to get done by July 1st, we left a little bit of wiggle room. Basically, like the city manager said, our next step is going to be take input from the city council. The school board had a couple of workshops themselves. We're gonna meet on August 5th where the district, city working group bring back the feedback from this meeting and from their meetings, and then go from there revising the, the current IJUA for McCullough, get started on mirroring the Oak Middle School IJUA for the fields, and then get working on the rest of them. At this time, be happy to answer any questions that you might have. School district members are here as well. I'm sure they can answer any questions, but obviously, the working group members as well, if you guys want to chime in if I missed anything, by all means. Thank you very much.
Great. So why don't we go ahead and open public comment, and then if the school district would like to say anything at that time, they're welcome to. You don't have to, we can do it down line.
I will, I, I'll just reiterate. Diana Hill, school member board and on our city working group, and I just want to say that I really do appreciate all the time that staff has put into this. It's just amazing. And Cory comes with this file about this big every time. So I know there's a lot, and I know there's a lot of detail, and we really appreciate that and appreciate both staff doing that, as well as having the opportunity to work with the city on, on, on what we see, because we both utilize these fields as a really big part of our community. And so we want to be in good partnership with you when it comes to that. So any other questions, I'm sure staff would be happy to answer.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll bring it back to the council. Anyone who has questions?
I'd like to.
Dean?
I'd like to hear from the working group in terms of concerns and issues they have before we weigh in.
Warren, do you want to go first?
Sure, I'll go first. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Councilmember Gross. So we have had several meetings. I missed, I think, a few of them, but there's been a lot of discussion on this. And I think, as Board Member Hill had said about the work of staff, I think they've really put in a lot of diligent hours. I think the, the part that, that I see, which is, we've kind of requested a lot of information on the cost, right? Because it looks like there's a lot of uppers for the city in terms of cost, and we just don't have the hard figures. And that's, I think, part of the challenge of what we have to deal with. But I, I think for me, from my perspective, you know, we're dealing with this in a very fair and balanced way, that we're trying to make sure that we're going to be able to provide the environment that we want as a city, as Parks and Rec, and be fair, and then share the, the costs and the, and the replacement cost down the road with the school district. We really appreciate that. So that'd be my kind of take on what it is. So real, I think the big thing is, we don't know what the costs are going to be in terms of the uppers for us.
Okay. For myself, I share the concerns, because we're, in the staff report, it talks about increases estimated from, I think it was 12,000 to 14,000 if we go with the current numbers. But with the field being improved, it could be as high as $22,000 to $24,000 a month. So I have reservations with regards to committing to these things because we don't have real numbers. Two, we would be absorbing the track field, which is something we haven't done. It's in a pretty good state of disrepair, as we've talked about, so that would be an increase for us. And, and when I do the numbers, if we were to forfeit half of the revenues from the gym, that would be a $10,000 loss. Oak Field water at its highest would be 24,000. And then McCullough for the upgrades and the new staff that we would have to bring on would take us up to about $55,000. And in the past couple of years, as we've talked about at our meetings, we've had to cut. And so where we would come up with these increases, if the council were to support those recommendations, I'm just not sure. I know in the budget, we have a percentage of it, but ongoing, you know, we had a $315,000 deficit for this year, and we don't know what to expect for next year. I guess we'll be getting some of the trends from Glenn, our, our professional in the finance department. But, you know, there's been some discussion, and I'm sure you've seen it in our meetings, where we're paying for the crossing guard, which is about $60,000. If, if everybody on the council were to support at the highest number what's being recommended by the district, I think that there was some interest in us walking away from the crossing guard as a whole, because it would almost be a wash. As far as the gym, the $10,000 sharing revenue for the gym, I'm not comfortable with that. We've had a working relationship, a good partnership, like you said, Diana, where we worked with you to the tune of $300,000 to improve the gym, which is something that, for the public's knowledge, is not our responsibility, but we felt as a partner with you, we wanted to take the opportunity while you were upgrading the school to really, really give it an overhaul. And, and I appreciate you working with us on that. Also, the restrooms that you provided for outside. I'm not really sure when that happened. I know initially, we had talked about the restrooms were going to be solely for the use of the city, and now they're being shared, which is great, as long as what the document says here is all those costs are shared, just like we're proposing for the fields. So to me, it, it's a very difficult pill for me to swallow that the school district would be increasing their revenues and making more money to where the city would be paying out more money or losing money, and I just don't know that we can afford that. So I would have to say, overall, just a quick overview, those would be some of my, my concerns for the council to consider. Anyone else?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Cory, from your perspective, you know, you've been in the details technically. You know, I've watched this over the last 10 years. You know, I, I'm the financial guy, so I should be concerned where Jerry's at with the revenue, but I also feel a lot of fairness going through, like, very thoughtful and using precedent to make decisions. So I, I was really going through here, maybe I'm still a little sour from the field thing over in Greenbrook, but that's a different issue. But I, this specifically, I, I really tried to see, well, what would I take exception to financially, especially when, as the ad hoc, we were struggling to make, you know, ends meet. And I think, for me, you know, the community values, you know, the, this quality of life. They value the ability to have these fields. And, you know, the bottom line is that these fields are at the school. And I just, I don't know. I, I read the report. It seems fair. I don't like the numbers, but I mean, if I have three boys that have been through the community, I, I don't know, I'm struggling. So from a technical perspective, anything else that we're lacking here that maybe we're not understanding, or maybe feedback from the, you know, even from the school board side, if there was something that maybe they don't feel is appropriate. But again, this is one where, you know, look, we made a decision to subsidize a pool because that we can't afford it, that we do, because the community wants it. We're struggling police-wise, public safety's number one, we've been able to close that. I'm, I'm just looking for, you know, is this the beginning of trying to continue to build a relationship and the trust thing, because we've got a bunch of contracts after this coming up? I, I'm just very interested in, in your perspective, a little bit closer, Cory, of, you know, is there something we're missing here, other than the obvious, which is the numbers? The longer-term partnership seems to be fair.
I think you kind of hit the, the nail on the head of the, you know, from an outsider perspective, looking in at, at the way the, the joint uses were originally set up, I think it was advantageous for the city financially. And this is a little bit more fair. The hard part is, 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 you know, the fields, the fields are fields. They're, they're a lot, a living, breathing thing. So ultimately, you know, McCullough Field, you know, the, the more wear and tear it gets on it, and the more, the higher level of maintenance now, it's going to mean more work. Right now, even at Oak, they're struggling with a weed that, that took over the brand-new field. You know, that, this happened a year ago, year and a half ago at McCullough, and, you know, Public Works had a very difficult time getting rid of it. Unfortunately, that's Mother Nature. So, you know, so the costs could ebb and flow based on the conditions of the fields, but yes, in, in all reality, the numbers are here, they're, they're hard to, to narrow down, even from year to year. You know, building costs are one thing, you know, you're going to replace, you know, over the years, you'll know you replace X number of lights and X number of, of basketball hoops and that sort of thing. But with grass, if a weed comes in, McCullough could cost us $10,000 or $15,000 more than it did the prior year. So without having longevity to our side, it, it's difficult to predict what the actual costs will be. But yes, in theory, if this goes equivalent, that we take over a seven-acre field, they, they continue to maintain a 10-acre field, ultimately, the city will be paying more for maintaining the fields.
Other question I had, Rich and I were in the ad hoc committee, and probably the thing that was another sensitive spot where I was, where when we thought we voted on something and then it came back to cost more, we didn't realize the collateral impact. On page five of 15 in the draft, Section 8, project funding and capital costs, just have a real quick question there. You know, we, we went through, I remember going over and hearing Patty talk through at the school district, a very elaborate process of bringing up the fields to a certain level. And anytime you're on the council, and especially when you have to vote on fees, believe me, it's, it comes back to haunt you. But I, you know, the hardest part for me was, I didn't anticipate having the extra costs, which is where I think the mirror is at, too, of, hey, there's some extra cost, maybe, I, I'll just speak for myself, maybe I thought were absorbed in the fee increase. And I know you explained it, but just reiterate one more time, because in this section, project funding and capital costs, it kind of talks about the mechanism that's laid out to build a capital improvement amount. And again, we're, tonight later, we're going to have a discussion on how we fund CIPs and the garage. So I think it's appropriate to have just a little bit more discussion on this and how the fees build up over time to get to a target amount, so we can actually do the things other than just mow the lawns.
So there were two fees that were, two sets of fees that were approved. There was the hourly rental fee that, that increased for some and actually lowered for one of the groups, but the different groups that rented, there's three groups now, there used to be six, and that's the hourly fee. And that's what helps, but doesn't cover the full cost, helps to pay for Public Works' time to go out and mow and edge and weed and aerate, the ongoing routine costs. The way that those were set up is, is to cover a portion of those costs, not the entire thing, because the school district utilizes it some, the city utilizes it some, and the user groups who pay utilize it some. So the district and the city are eating those costs, and the user groups are paying for those costs. In addition to those fees, we set up a new CIP or per-head fee is what it used to be known as. Now it's the capital direct fees or the CIP fees. That is money that is charged a per-head fee, per individual utilizing the field for the different organizations that rent the field, four times or more per season, there's three seasons in a year. So if an organization comes in, and that's where the weight multiplication, weight factor was included, that money is set aside into the CIP. And that money, again, this year, the first year in 2014 of that, it incrementally goes up over the next five years until, I believe, 2018, when it's at, at its maximum. So right now, we're basically making anywhere between $2 and, I think, $5. So right now, we're basically making anywhere between $2 and, I think, $5 per head, depending on the type of activity, the type of sport, per person, times the number of people. I think for the first season, we made about $6,000 collectively, $5,000? Okay, so about $5,000 or $6,000 that is retained in the CIP fund, either with the district or with the city. And that's where we're recommending that the money be retained in those funds until the time that both funds get to about $500,000, and then can be spent on a major capital projects. Again, starting with a joint-use field, so either McCullough or Oak, then a city field, then a district field. The unfortunate part is because we're going to take so long to start bringing in those money, it could be five to seven years before we hit that $500,000 threshold in order to be able to spend those funds. But, you know, spending $20,000 or $30,000 isn't what the intention of this is. It's not, you know, replacing light bulbs on a field or, you know, a broken sprinkler head. It's major hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of repairs.
I think the mayor wants to add on something.
Well, Corey, can you explain to them, or maybe the school district, we now are being told that there's some legislation coming down that will change that whole CIP makeup. Diana, or Sherri, or Patty, whoever might want to come up, John?
Good afternoon. Yes, the law that allowed us to start charging a capital fee was put into place approximately two years ago. Just this spring, the State Board of Education finally got around to writing regulations on how they've interpreted that law. And the concept of a per-head fee, we're being told by the legal group, is not what their intention is now going to be. They have just released that, and we have our attorneys looking at it. So because it may become down to more of a rental-per-acre or usage-type fee, which, as you already heard Corey talk about us, in the first six months, we garnered a whole $6,700 approximately. It was their intent that this be a capital improvement. And on fields, you're usually looking at a 30-year lifespan. But we've also been told that these fees may have to be associated with the field of use. So we're waiting for those interpretations. And obviously, we'll continue with what we have until we knew, or we're informed and directed on how we have to go forward. But our attorneys are basically telling us that the per-head fee is not what the State Board wants to see school districts utilize.
Right. And I think a very important part that you just stated also is that the money, wherever it's raised, whatever field, it has to stay at that field.
That is a potential interpretation that we're hearing about. I haven't seen a final reading on that.
Right, it's an option. Okay, great.
So Patty, though, Corey, while you're there, as it pertains to CIP, and let's just say that whatever we want to call it, the money keeps accumulating. $6,000 a year does not sound nearly enough. So do we, as a policy, need to start also planning to augment the supplement on both the school board planning financially and the council? Or does the dynamics of the numbers and the equation change from two to three to five, and gets more exponential and builds up faster? I'm just trying to find out what we need to plan for longer term.
Well, I would say if we could stay in our per-head fee, that's half a year's worth. So you, first off, could double it. Plus, it was only one-fifth of what we originally had suggested be implemented. So if you had implemented it fully for the first six months, you may have seen some $30,000 to $40,000 worth of fees, double that, you might have $80,000. So you would think legitimately, within a reasonable amount of time, you could have some reasonable dollars there to do a capital improvement fund with. What I can't speak to yet is with this new interpretation from the State Board of Education, how that may affect the fees and how you deal with the impact of different user groups. You know, you may come as an individual, Mr. Edgar, and say, I want to rent the Oak field because you're having a, I don't know, family reunion. And there's 12 of you out playing, as opposed to 1,200 kids there playing football on a Friday night. So I don't think the State Board has taken into account a usage factor in this capital fee. And that's what we're looking for right now, to find out how can this be utilized? Because if it's just a per utilization or per hour or something, if they come out with a different type of fee that can be utilized, you may never see enough money in a capital fee to do a major scrub and grub, as we so technically call it.
Yeah, that's a new term.
Because that is very expensive, speaking from Oak's perspective recently.
Are you guys mutually recommending that we sign an agreement before that legislation is finalized? Or at least the legal determination, or?
Well, we're looking at the fact that we're currently in a relationship with the master, which is currently still in effect, it's got approximately one more year, and these individual joint uses. The legislation's going to continue to change as things go forward, and we can deal with the capital improvement portion as we get better information and work through that. But I think it's always important for us, one, the master deals with liability and insurance and all those things, that we definitely want to have both entities covered for. God forbid there ever be a serious accident, or, because they'll sue us all. You know what I'm saying? And then the individual joint use, because the most current joint use we had was on McCullough, and it ran out approximately three to four years ago now. So I think it behooves both entities to move forward. And then as additional legal requirements or information comes available, you can come back and amend based on the best information you have.
Thank you, Patty. Are you with that, too? Okay, last question for you, and then I'm done. So bigger picture. So we settle an intergovernmental agreement for Parks and Rec stuff. Anything that we're doing in this will have any effect on our strategy or set of precedents in how we're going to deal with the base when we have to renegotiate the pool? Are we doing anything now that we would kind of cringe? Because I honestly am not familiar with that yet, but I know, based on the budget discussion, that's going to be a really important discussion coming up. So I just want to make sure we're mindful of the bigger picture here.
Right now, some of the, I mean, the proposed IJUAs are kind of a 50-50 split. The pool, we pay 100%. So I don't see if this gets approved as is or with any changes, whether we retain 100% of revenue in this category or pay 100% of expenditures in this category. Right now, the pool, we pay 100% of everything.
So it can only get better.
It can only get better if they're willing to pay any of anything.
Thank you. Thanks, ma'am.
Richard?
I had a lot of similar concerns, especially since we're trying to become more fund-oriented and budget for our future expenses in the current years and kind of spread them out over the years. It seems as if we really just don't have the answers at this point. Let me start with the most basic question, and that is, Attachment 3, we're paying for a round number, for sake of discussion, $50,000 more than we were. Why or how?
Why or how? Basically, renegotiation and equality for across the board.
Okay, how much percentage would you put to either of those?
I mean, it was basically a starting point that staff began with of, all the IJUAs are up. Let's start from scratch and figure out where we're going to go. And basically, staff decided, let's start at 50-50 across the board and go from there. I mean, there's basically two ways to go at it. It's, you keep everything the way that it's been, which we had discussed of, it's to the betterment of the city and to the, on the worst side, the school district has been paying for more than the city has been. So if we're going to enter this into an equal partnership, then we start 50-50. And again, it was a starting point that staff had with little direction to go from. And so that's where we figured it would be a good starting point, 50-50. And then we can go from there, and based on direction from the council and the school board, we can go back to where we were, meet in the middle of those two, go to 50-50, or change it from there.
Have we done anything percentage-wise as to usage? Have we looked at the numbers from that?
It's based on the hours of usability. It's basically a third, a third, a third. School district uses it about a third. The city can utilize it about a third, and the user groups use it about a third of the time. Reality is, is the school district, the dates of school are set. Again, whether their kids are actually utilizing the fields and that sort of thing 100% of the time, it's likely not occurring, just like the city doesn't utilize the fields 100% of the time allocated to us, and the user groups don't utilize it 100% of the time. So we did that in the formula when setting the fees. We estimated 260 days of usage or somewhere along those lines, instead of 365. Took into account, you know, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM on average, that sort of thing. And when it came down to it, it's about a third, a third, a third. A third city, a third user groups that pay, and then a third, the district.
Okay. And this next question, feel free to say you need more time for. There was a lot of discussion a year ago of larger user fees, which then got cut back dramatically. Is the city now taking up the slack for what the user groups did not want to pay? And is that what's causing the extra $50,000?
No, not entirely. The cutback mainly had to do with the capital improvement side, not the ongoing side. With that said, by agreeing that we're going to bring the fields up to a higher level, we're agreeing to absorb more costs. If it costs us $50,000 to maintain it at this level and $75,000 to retain it at this level, we'll make up for a percentage of that $25,000 difference in the user fees, but not $25,000. It may be, again, a third of that or a quarter of that. We did see a reduction in use from the user groups when the fees went up. That's a fact. We did see them drop usage. Again, you know, it may have been a half an hour a night, but you multiply that out by a certain number of nights. So ultimately, we're not bringing in as much revenue as we could had we kept the prices the same. But the bottom line is about the same. The differences here on Attachment 3, again, have to do with specifically just the changes in the joint-use agreements. Basically, us now maintaining extra acreage at McCullough and paying for water on that extra acreage, in addition to paying for water at Oak, which we've never done before. And then potentially splitting the revenue and the cost to, all we included was the cost to rehab the floor over at the Oak Gym. The other costs, my guess, are negligible and/or are to be negotiated going forward. So it's, the $50,000 round number that you provided when this started just has to do with the joint-use agreements, not really the conditions of the field. They're not going to improve or change based on the individual joint-use agreements. It's the city taking care of more acreage and splitting the costs with the district more equally.
Surprised Troy didn't ask this question, but will we be getting more data supporting the numbers as they go forward to let us know how these estimates are arrived at? Because there was some discussion that it sounded like these costs could skyrocket in the future once we've reached the agreement. Both sides don't really know what some of the costs are going to be. As you said, some of it's due to nature. You know, who knows where we're going? Maybe the gophers come back, and, you know, that takes a lot of money.
I think the McCullough Middle School field portion, again, will ultimately come down to how much work is it going to take to maintain it? I mean, right now, it's not in the best condition. So Public Works will take over the maintenance of it to the best of their abilities without, you know, putting $300,000 into scrubbing and grubbing the one acre. So they'll do the best that they can. So we factored in those costs. We're going to put fertigation, or continue the fertigation that's already in over there and pay for that, and then we'll pay for the water. So that number, like I said, we're pretty consistent. We're trying to get hard numbers for the fertigation, but it's around $18,000 to $21,000. That's pretty solid, staff time, you know, the extra time it is to mow and maintain the field and aerate and weed and put seed and topper. Basically, we're taking six acres and growing it to seven to maintain. So that number's relatively good. Again, Tony's guys could get out there and find something that, or, like you said, Mother Nature could come over and do something to that field that we may not know about. The biggest question mark is the water. And the bigger question mark is at Oak, where, again, it's a new irrigation system, new seed, five-blend seed that we don't have anywhere in the city currently, or at any of the elementary school sites or any of the school sites currently. So this is the five blend of grass that the PRZ report recommended. A new irrigation system in the soil has been leveled, not graded, but leveled. So the hope is, is that it will utilize less water. That's the intent of redoing all that and putting in a new irrigation system, is less water. So we're all hoping for the lower end. But again, until, you know, I don't know if the school district has numbers. They might be able to get some from their contractors on what estimates are. But again, they're going to be estimates based upon, you know, Mother Nature and...
Let me close on that question. What if the drought gets really bad? What happens to our ability to keep the fields up at that point?
I'd have to defer that question to Tony, at least from the city's side.
Thank you. To answer your question, if the drought continues on, there's been talk about basically cutting the water down to two times a week. Okay? I'll relate this kind of to your personal homes, okay? If you were able, if you were watering currently right now, and your grass is staying nice and green and lush, and you're watering five to six times a week, you all of a sudden have to cut it back to two times a week. Your grass is going to brown a little bit. It won't look as nice. Now, walk over it 20 times a day at your house. Now, all you'd have to do is multiply that same scenario to a six-to-seven acre parcel, having sports on it from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM at night. You can kind of imagine what could happen, okay? Hopefully, we, might shoot myself in the foot here, but hopefully, we get an El Nino this year. Okay? That'll really help the state out. But yes, the drought is a definite concern.
And what's in the agreement, then, Corey, to, if we have to cut back? I mean, I know the users are expecting a certain level. Is the agreement going to, are they going to understand that in the agreement? That some things are going to be out of our control? If I remember, last time water got really tight, when we cut back, the water department doubled the cost of water, or some huge percentage, because they weren't making their money. So water costs have a real potential to go up dramatically now. Because as a public utility, they're guaranteed a rate of return. So even though they don't deliver the water, the prices get raised to guarantee them their money.
We don't have agreements with the individual user groups on a maintenance level or a watering schedule or anything of that nature. Ultimately, the only agreement that we have is with the district. So my guess is it'd be a good city-district working group discussion on, do we let the fields deteriorate? Do we water less and keep our fingers crossed? Do we lower usage? And then we take a joint message to the groups and say, you know, here's our dilemma. We're mandated or required or need to utilize it less. What can we collectively do? And, you know... And, you know, and, and go from that standpoint. But the user groups, you know, they want a higher level maintenance field. They're paying for it.
Right.
But, two years ago, when this all started, we didn't know that there was going to be a horrible dry spell.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we've got just a couple of minutes before we move on to the next meeting. Dean, you had some items you wanted to bring up?
I'll try and, and do it briefly. The, the concern I have has to do with the finance aspect of it. It's a little bit like suddenly being told we need to come up with $800,000 for police radios, and trying to figure out where that's coming from. The user groups that approved what was done, at the time that I was on the ad hoc committee, was to be done over two years, and the decision was made, and ultimately adopted by both the school district and the council, to spread it out over five years. So I think something needs to go back to the user groups, to explain kind of the situation. You can't take a, a beat-up Volkswagen over at McAuliffe, for lack of a better word, and turn it into a, a more modern vehicle overnight, without money coming from somewhere. So I think we need to look at that. I'm concerned, I share the mayor's concern with the, from the standpoint of the expense. I share council member Murphy's concern, that I'd like to see more money in studies. I think it's unreasonable that we have to take everything up to grade level A in one fell swoop, because that's what they're paying for. Maybe we need to go back and reinstitute fees differently. On page three of 15 of the draft agreement is a section 1.0 regarding the Civic Center Act. I would like more information on that. We've had some situations where the district exempted themselves from local regulations. This almost sounds like the same kind of a thing, and I'd like to know what that really means. I've read it, and, and I'm not sure how that pans out. I would like the city attorney to look into the user fee issue, from the standpoint that if we're collecting user fees, and the school district is covered by the education code, and the education code says they can't do this this particular way, what does that do to us from the standpoint of our codes that we operate under, if we collect the fee and then make the decision to split it back? If that's the case, maybe there's a, a different relationship where, instead of a use agreement, it's more a rental agreement, so that the city actually acquires use of it. I'm thinking somewhat similar to what goes on at Anaheim Stadium, where teams like the Angels have a proprietary use of the facility, and therefore have to pay property taxes, since they kind of control the facility. Maybe we can protect those monies coming in through the city, and still achieve the same results, but not be involved from the standpoint of the education code that may toss everything we're trying to do cooperatively out the door. The last point I'll bring up, and, and I would like staff to take a look at this sooner than later. Several years back, when we had water issues, the city of Long Beach was producing gray water, purple pipe, and they do that in their parks. And the discussion was, how are we going to get it? Well, in reality, it's in the parks over here, immediately west of the freeway. So coming across that creek, at one of the bridges, to bring several large pipes across, to get it over to McAuliffe, I'm sorry, over to Oak, for one starter, makes sense. And at that time, Long Beach was looking for places where they could sell the gray water. That may not be the right word for it, but it's, you know, the recycled water that they use to irrigate their parks and their facilities.
Yeah.
How we get it from there, over to McAuliffe, or to any other city facilities, is probably a capital project that would have to be looked at, and hopefully funded some way, but I think we need to explore. That would certainly address the drought issue, if there's an alternative way that we can irrigate those facilities. And, and I'll stop at that point.
Great. Okay, so, do any of the other council members have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead, and Wendy, is this just moving into the next special order of the day? Okay, we'll move into our next meeting, which is special orders of the day, and it is interview applicants for cable television and personal appeals commission. And I see Chuck is in the audience, so we can move straight on to his 5:00 appointment. And if you'd like to come to the front, Chuck?
Thanks for coming.
We know it's a little early. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself, and if you have any comments you'd like to make, before we start with the questions, we can go ahead and have you do that now.
I'm Chuck Landon, 25-plus-year resident here in Los Alamedos. Raised three children here, and currently a member of the Park and Recreation Commission.
Great. All right, and you are looking for the Personnel Appeals Commission tonight, is that correct?
That's what I have applied for, yes.
Great. Okay, so we'll start with Dean. Can you take question number one, and then down the council subsequently?
Hi, Chuck.
Hi, Dean.
What special traits, characteristics, or experience do you bring to the Personnel Appeals Commission?
Well, I have 30-plus years of human resources management experience. I am currently the director of human resources with a aerospace company down in Irvine. I served on the Personnel Commission from 1990 to 2003, and, as I said, I am just coming off the Park and Recreation Commission now. So fairly well-versed with the city, and how commissions work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chuck. Good to see you. So why do you want to serve on the Personal Appeals Commission?
Well, I'm, I tend to be fairly active, in whether it's the high school, the city, church, whatever it is I'm involved in. And just my way of giving back to the city. As I said, I'm currently on Parks and Rec. Considered going back to that commission, did enjoy it. Thank you, Corey. But I really think this is the best way for me to utilize my skills and give back to the city in a way that really makes sense, in terms of dovetailing my human resources experience with the city's needs.
Thank you.
Great. All right. What do you think is the most significant issue facing Personnel Appeals Commission?
Well, I don't know that you have any current issues right now. During my tenure, most of the issues that came before the board, or the commission, were primarily police-related. I think, under Chief Matter, most of those issues hopefully have gone away. I think we're under good leadership now, so I think that would be minimized. So I don't know that we have any big outstanding issues right now. I think probably the biggest challenge you have is to ensure that you have the, the right people on the commission, whenever there's an issue that comes forward.
Great, thank you. Richard?
In your own words, what do you feel is the role of Personnel Appeals Commission in Los Alamedos?
Well, my experience on it, Richard, has been, you're hearing the grievances, complaints, issues, in some cases pending lawsuits, before they actually get to that level. I know that typically, that both the city, as well as the employee at that point, whether or not they're on suspension or not, are usually here with council, have been with that, familiar with that, in terms of both labor relations and employee relations. So, I think that, I think the biggest opportunity here is to provide alternatives and resolutions that, in an unbiased way, an objective way, that perhaps either the city, or the employee, or their council hadn't thought of.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your long and hopefully continued service.
Thank you.
Troy, number five?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Chuck.
Hi, Troy.
When considering actions for the Personnel Appeals Commission, how do you balance the best interests of the entire community against the likes or dislikes of yourself, your friends, or your neighbors?
Well, I'm pretty much unaffected by what my friends and neighbors have to say, for the most part. I deal with this every day, really, under pressure with individuals, in terms of individuals controlling my paycheck, and try and come to unbiased and objective decisions that are best for the company, in my day-to-day role, and hopefully would be the best for the city, and at least putting that recommendation forward, as a commission. By the way, one thing that I, I forgot to mention, is that during those 13 years that I was on the Personnel Commission, I think I wrote the responses on behalf of the commission in all those years.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any closing comments?
No, just appreciate service, and appreciate the consideration.
Well, we thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Robert Lee. Wendy, is he going to be on the mic again?
He was 50/50, I think, right?
We were advised that he is on vacation and might not make it back before tonight.
Okay, great.
His application was in time, so he can still be considered.
All right. Well, I see that John is in the audience. John, would you mind going early? Is that okay with...
Could I ask a question before we get to that point?
Sure.
How many, we're pointing on Personnel Appeals and cable only tonight?
Correct.
How many vacancies on Personnel Appeal are there?
Three. There's one applicant for Cable Television Commission, with one available term, and Personnel Appeals Commission has three applicants with three available terms.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead and have John come up. Welcome, John.
Pleasure to address you all together.
Why don't you go ahead, and if you have any comments to start off, we'll, we'll do that, and if not, we'll get straight into the questions.
No, I, I really don't have any comments. I'm anxious to respond.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and start in the same order. Dean, will you take the first question, please?
John, what special traits, characteristics, or experience do you bring to the Cable Television Commission?
Well, certainly, I have had a, a great deal to do with LATV, particularly in the last 10 years. I've been instrumental in creating close to 100 programs of various kinds and dimensions at LATV, and representing various organizations in the community. I, certainly in that 10 years, I've developed some very important relationships with organizations in the community, potential sponsors and sponsors in the community, developed, tried to develop those over the years. So I have a very intimate knowledge of the Los Alamedos community, and many relationships with the business, education, artistic, and social nonprofit and charitable groups in town. Beyond that, I have about 35 years, if, if my math is right, of experience in broadcast television and radio, working collaboratively with others to create television and radio in a team environment, which is not always the most, easiest thing to do, but especially in a frenetic medium like broadcasting. And I also, I probably should say that I am the creator and prime mover for the LATV studio, which in 2009 and '10 was rehabilitated, and in 2010 saw its first return to broadcast programming from Studio One. So that was an effort that I'm very, I'm very proud of.
Okay, so, hi, John. So, why do you want to serve on the Cable Television Commission?
Well, I mentioned the studio, and, something I'm very proud of, but it is a job left undone. And I believe that the, as a representative of the Cable Commission, I can draw further attention to the studio, which I think is a key element of the future success of the studio, in terms of its relevance and engagement with the community. So I hope to stay in that capacity, and be able to influence the incorporation of community producers into LATV through the facility of Studio One. That's very important to me, and I think in that way, we can close the circle we once were able to with the community, and be able to have community driving LATV, instead of us sputtering along, begging and borrowing money from the city.
Okay, great. We'll move on to question three. What do you think is the issue most significant facing the Cable Commission?
Well, I certainly think the primary consideration here is that everyone knows we're in a very financially strapped condition. We need to do more with less. And I've known this for some time now, and have tried to reach out and get the community to be part of that answer. The educational community, the nonprofits in town, trying to get them on board, get them financially involved, and involved as producers at LATV, so they can be part of that, of that answer. I think, again, maintaining that production facility, Studio One, is important to that end. It is a, a locus of attention, that the community can focus on, can identify with as, as a brand for LATV, and that they can rally around. I think the production facility is extremely important in that regard. A partnership is what I'm talking about, between LATV and the community, so that the community becomes part of the answer, part of LATV's answer, something that, that in the last several years has been missing, to some extent.
Great, thank you. Richard?
Hey, John, thanks for coming. In your own words, what do you feel is the role of the Cable Television Commission in Los Alamedos?
Well, I think it has some very fundamental roles in, of course, formulating policy, putting our ear to the ground, and trying to represent what the council is, is, the messages that the council is sending us in terms of policy, but also to be proactive in formulating that policy as well, because a number of us on the commission are fairly knowledgeable, and have a long history of community PEG television, not just in Los Alamedos, but elsewhere as well. So I think we come with a collective intelligence on the ground about how to make PEG work. And I think, if we're allowed to, to run with it, if you will, I think that we can formulate forward-looking policy, and regulate operations at LATV, that is to say, oversee the larger regulatory aspects of LATV as commissioners. I think it's important to try and reach the other way, too, to the municipal side, to staff, and try and understand what staff needs, and how LATV can be useful to the city of Los Alamedos as well. I've spent a great deal of time working with various agencies of the city, rec department, for example, in trying to resurrect, in being successful, actually, at resurrecting our community calendar, and making sure that, that city is involved in, in the outreach of those calendar items as well, that the city is represented there as well. So it's, I see the role of the LATV Commission as reaching in both directions, out to the community, and also back to the city, to represent both interests, because I think it's going to require all of those hands on deck to be able to make LATV successful.
Thank you.
Troy?
Good evening, John.
Troy?
When considering actions for the Cable Television Commission, how do you balance the best interests of the entire community against the likes or dislikes of yourself, your friends, and your neighbors?
Well, I guess I'll respond to that this way. When I came to LATV, I came with only one interest in mind, really. I came from a broadcast background, but I was, and also a news reporting background. And what I wanted to do was do a broadcast news reporters' roundtable type of show. I was successful at that. We did about a season's worth of episodes, 12 episodes of a program called Backstory, which did receive some public television awards. As I was anticipating being, taking a larger role, and then taking a role with the commission, what I began to do, I actually abandoned Backstory. what I began to do, I actually abandoned Backstory, and I took on some other television production roles such as Your Los Al, which is a completely different orientation. It's not oriented toward me as a host or me as a producer or what my interests are at the moment, and took on a more communitarian and social kind of format and went out and represented, well, beyond the 50th anniversary, which is where that program started, but also went on to represent the community and in some respects, the city and city staff in programs that they and the city were initiating and putting forward to the community. So I thought in that way, I could be more effective and more valuable abandoning my particular program ideas and picking up a more broadly programmed concept like Your Los Al that represented more people in the community with broader interests than simply my own. So I think I've done that. We did 37 episodes of Your Los Al, representing not particularly my interests, but, you know, events, special interests, issues around the city of Los Alamedos.
Thank you.
Great, John, do you have any closing comments?
No, I just, I guess I'll stick my neck out and just say that I hope that, I see with this latest vote from the commission that we do have a sense of unity on the commission about how to work, how to move forward. And I think that it's a unique time, at least in the last decade or so of our existence at LATV, when I think that we all are moving of like mind in a particular direction. I think we know where we need to go. I think we have the collective intelligence as a commission to do so. I'd like to continue working with that commission to make LATV reach, as I said before, both ways, out to the community and engage the community as part of our collective answer to successful outreach in LATV, but also reach back to the city. A long time ago, Public Television Representative Sue Buskey told me that, at a conference up north, that you will never succeed at community television without the tacit or active support of your council and your staff at the city. I understand that very well. And I urge you all to get, you know, behind our commission and help us to move forward into the future, to make LATV as successful as it has been in decades past.
Great, thank you so much for coming, John.
Thank you.
All right. Wendy, was Betty going to be able to make it?
Betty will be here. She advised that she's getting off work early, and she would be arriving most likely right at 5:30.
Great. We'll go ahead and just wait for just a few moments.
Take a 10-minute recess?
You want to take a 10-minute recess? Great. All right, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order.
I'll start you tomorrow.
And we'll go ahead and invite up Betty Schmicker Black. She's our last interview for the evening. Betty, you want to go ahead and come up? Betty, you're applying for the Personnel Appeals Commission?
Yes.
Any, anything that you'd like to say to the council before we get started? Nope?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, great, great. That's very, that's very good. Moving on, Dean, we'll go ahead and have you take one.
Good morning, good afternoon.
Trick question.
What, thanks, Betty, for coming in. What special traits, characteristics, or experience do you bring to the Personnel Appeals Commission?
Well, let's see. You know, work-wise, for the last 38 years, I've worked in higher education, mostly in areas related to job placement, job performance. I, 20 of those years, I've been on the Personnel Appeals Commission. And I think over that 20 years, we've only had two cases, but, you know, those were certainly ones that we resolved. I think the results were positive. I think that people received the information well. I think as a committee, we functioned effectively together with assistance from the city attorney. So, I mean, that's probably it in a nutshell.
It's definitely our hardest-working commission.
Isn't it? We don't want to work hard. If we don't work hard, it's good.
Yeah, that's good, good.
So why is it that you want to serve on the Personnel Appeals Commission?
Well, I mean, I've enjoyed it. I certainly like being involved in the city. I've often thought about another one that interacted more often, but I have a pretty demanding job, so that probably wouldn't work well. You know, there's a side of me that wishes we'd met more, but we don't want to meet more, so.
Great, okay. This may not, you may not have an answer for this, so if you don't, just say pass. What do you think the issue is that is most significant facing the Personnel Appeals Commission?
Well, you know, actually, I looked at that. I think the issue is that you don't know what you're going to deal with. And so when it arises, it's important that you get up to speed quickly. And the people on the group, you know, haven't had an opportunity to work together. I remember one year, the person who was our appointed leader had suggested that maybe we have an event or we get together, but it seemed kind of like if you don't really know what the issue is, you can't prepare for it. So I think the issue is that you choose people that are committed, are intelligent, rational people who, when put to the test, can come together as a group and deal with that issue. But you don't know what it's going to be, so you don't necessarily, as long as they have some knowledge about issues related to work and how those can be resolved and how those can potentially present problems.
Okay, great, thank you. Richard, number four?
Hi, thank you for coming. What do you feel is the role of the Personnel Appeals Commission in Los Alamedos?
Well, I think it's to be a non-biased group of people that can hear that issue, can hear both sides, and then can, with assistance from the attorney that was serving us, can take a look at what those issues are and, you know, render a decision that is appropriate.
Thank you.
Troy?
Good evening, Betty.
Hi.
When considering actions of the Personnel Appeals Commission, how do you balance the best interests of the entire community against the likes, dislikes of yourself, your friends, and your neighbors? And I know that I keep getting this question, I'm at the end of the barrel here, but yeah.
And since you are my neighbor, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, I see a classic for it.
Yeah, so the question is, how do you balance the two?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the emphasis has to be separating yourself from that, that it's not, you know, it's not looking at whether you believe wherever they represent in the city, whether that department, what your feelings are about that department or who you know that works in that department, but what's the personnel issue there? And was that person fairly treated? Was the actions that they took appropriate? Was the discipline that they received in line? Was it not in line? And again, it's looking at what appropriate procedure was. And again, each time, the two times that we actually had one, I mean, we had a notebook like this with all of the sides, with the evidence, with their position, with the city's position. So again, it's separating yourself from any, you know, kind of like being on jury duty, separating yourself from anything that you know about that situation and only looking at the facts that are presented to you. And you don't go out doing your own research, you don't go out gathering other facts, you don't, it's completely confidential, you don't talk to other people about it. It simply is what's discussed in the room back there amongst those of you on the commission.
Great, thank you, Betty.
Thank you. Any closing comments?
No.
Okay, great. Well, thanks so much for coming.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, so we'll go ahead and bring it back. Wendy, do you have the ballots for us? Can you clarify, too? We can act on these in one motion, is that correct? Because there's three availabilities for the one commission and three applicants, and then one availability for the LATV and one applicant for that, correct?
Correct. I'll pass out the indications of support and read back how much support was for each person. There can be one motion to appoint the, whichever applicant has the most indications of support.
Okay.
That can be the motion.
All right.
Or you can take them in separately for each commission.
All right, great.
So I guess a mayor point of just clarification with respect to Robert Lee, who is not here. He is expired term?
He's an incumbent, and his term is coming up for expiration at the end of the month. And he did submit his application at the time.
Yeah, I think as we saw that he is an HR professional, I think that's his profession. So I'd like to just go ahead and have him waive the interview, and we can just vote on that.
Absolutely, we've done that in the past. Wendy, do you want our names on these?
You can include your name or not. Thank you.
Secret ballot.
Do you have to have her name on them?
You don't have to.
They just fold it another four or five times.
Yeah, makes me feel better, thank you, Dean. Geez. Good morning to you.
We're not drawing.
I know, since I'm nervous. Okay, so we have four indications of support for applicant John Underwood for the Cable Television Commission, and five indications of support for Chuck Landon, Robert Lee, and Betty Schmicker Black on the Personnel Appeals Commission.
Okay, great. So would you like to move on that as a collective?
Make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor is a roll call, isn't it, Wendy?
It can be a roll call if you want.
Okay, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, just because I already said it.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gross?
Yes.
Councilmember Kusamoto?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Graham Mejia? Aye.
Okay, great. So congratulations to all of you. Betty, good to see you again. And we'll go ahead and recess until 6:00, when the regular meetings begin.
We have a closed session.
Oh, we have a closed session.
Request, couple things.
I tried to sneak on out of there.
Conference with labor negotiators, Carrie Reisman and Greg Cordner regarding both associations, the CEA and the POA, and a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2.
All right.
One case.
Going into closed session.